I'd like to call the work session order for December 5, 2022. City Clerk, please read the roll call.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you. We only have one item on the agenda tonight. We'd like to remind council that staff will be pausing intermediately to answer any questions. Staff, staff will be reviewing the findings of the public safety training facility feasibility study. Go ahead and introduce yourselves.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Paul Louiezy, interim Deputy City Manager. Tonight, I'm sitting alongside Daniel Montoba from the RDD Planning Group. And also, I just want to call a shout out to Frank Bono, who also was part of the group but was unable to travel tonight because of illness. So tonight, as part of the agenda, what we'll do is we'll walk through the purpose of the work session, public safety training facilities in the region. We'll do an overview of the needs assessment. That will be done by Daniel. Envisioning of the future of the public safety training facility, again by Daniel, and then recommendations and next step. Just wanted to provide just a little bit of who the team was that worked through this. So certainly, we had members from the Fire Department, police, and Jared actually helped us quite a bit in the Finance Department. We also had quite a large number of members from each of the departments that participated in a charrette, just to get a good sense of what we would want in a, in a public safety training facility. So just to bring you back to the city manager's goal that was due this month was to conduct a study to determine whether it would be financially and operationally beneficial to build a public safety training facility and present then recommendations to council. So we are here tonight to do that. But first, we're going to look at some of the facilities that are across our region. So as you can see on the map there, I'll just start from Goodyear and kind of work my way east. So we have the Glendale Regional Public Safety Training Center, which is a combined PD and fire training facility. Phoenix Fire is a standalone, so they only train Fire Department personnel there. Same with Scottsdale and Tempe are both stand alones. Mesa is a combined public safety training facility with both police and fire, along with Gilbert and Chandler. So those are the current centers that are in the valley. And as far as where fire can be trained, as far as the automatic aid agreement, those trains can only occur at Glendale, Phoenix, Mesa, Gilbert, or Chandler. So I'm going to turn it over to Daniel at this point.
Thank you. So part of the strategic business plan and then sort of master plan to help you all understand where you may want to go with a training facility, we have five things that we sort of wanted to try and achieve with this. The first one would be to figure out where your training needs actually are, or what they want to be, what the, what the current facilities are and, and what their assessment is, what it may be in order to achieve where you want to go. So that's what the program is. So what classes do you want to support and how do you, how do we support them? What that may cost you? And then obviously, what would be the next steps for you, for your all consideration? So the first thing to sort of talk about is what training needs do we have? So that, that first thing we have is recruiter basic training. So it's to prepare a person to become a new officer in the Police and Fire Department. Okay? And the second thing would be a lateral training. So it'd be training from another state or another municipality that is coming to Arizona that needs to now meet your post requirements. And then lastly, it's those who are already sort of employed or officers here, they need to maintain their training, or they want to become something different. They want to become an engineer or something else. They need additional training as well. So that, that would be in-service training. And all those hours in order to maintain who you are as an officer, those are tracked annually and on an annual basis by department, by role and position. Okay? So in overview, we gathered sort of all those parts and pieces of information. We'll give you, we'll give you some more information on that. But we gathered that, put that all together in a strategic business plan for, for your consumption. And part of that was to really figure out how much training, where do we want to be? How much training do we, do we really want to achieve? And we came up with, after surveying all the, all the departments, almost 124,000 hours. And that's hours per year. And by the way, this is only hours per year at a training center. As you may or may not know, personnel from both Fire and Police, they train on, in other facilities. They have small props in Fire Departments themselves where they used to train as well. That is not counted here. Those who are over and above this 124,000 number, and that equates to about 436 hours per year per officer. Okay? So what, what we want to start out with on this is saying, we are not in any way saying that we are not meeting the standards. Okay? We, the, both Fire and Police are absolutely meeting their training and certification requirements, period. Okay? There's no question there. It does come with challenges. It does come with operational and scheduling challenges that these folks are trying to overcome. And that's, that's what we're, that's what we're trying to present to you tonight. So the backstory of this is what we'll go into. And of course, that, that last point is, how do we establish something that is sort of our own? And not me, but your own, your community's own. And then that's, that's what we call a home ground. So currently, we, we talked about those challenges. Again, we're meeting the standards. We're meeting certifications. But the city is not a capital partner in any of these regional training facilities. Okay? Which means their, your priority is low. You're not a, you're not a member of AAA. You got to pay somebody to come tow your car. Right? So you, Goodyear is considered an outside agency. So scheduling can take six months, or it can get, you know, the rug can get pulled out from under you when you're, you know, the day before you're ready to go there. The other, the other thing that is somewhat of a challenge is the facilities that you do use now for training are not here. Okay? So it takes up to an hour to drive to Joe Foss, to an outdoor range, to get those, to get those firearms training programs in. Could take 30 to 50 minutes round trip to get to Phoenix or Glendale for some fire training as well. And what that does is not only are you paying folks to just drive somewhere, but it also takes them out of service. And it also, if there's something where you needed, you have an all hands, something that happens here in town, they're 30 minutes, 50 minutes away from you, from your community, to come back and, and help with that event. Excellent. So again, what these folks have been doing is utilizing other community resources. They've been using high school gyms to support defensive tactics training. They've been trading their access card or, or abilities with other municipalities to gain that specialized training where they can get it. We talked about lateral hire. So completion of EVAC or emergency vehicle driving training due to scheduling difficulties, it's, it's, could create a little bit of a pension in getting folks hired and, and ready to go. There is a lack of access to some advanced training components, like tactical simulation mazes, or indoor drone, outdoor drone negotiating simulations. So it's, it's just hard to come by, we'll say. So what we've come away with, with these challenges in order to solve them, and again, talking with departments, is three possibilities. The first one is to sort of go at it your own. So build and operate your own facility that you, that only your departments have control over. The second option would be for, it's more of a regional facility. So you would partner with an adjacent community or adjacent communities on both either capital and/or operational expenditures, using governance model, using user fees, et cetera, in order to train at a, at, at a facility. And then the, the last option is to maintain your current course. So don't build anything. And, and sort of use a decentralized training facility model and, and use the facilities that are in the valley. So pros and cons of these options, we'll start with here with option A, which is build your own facility. Obviously, it's yours. You get to establish what you want and how you want to operate it. You get the home ground. You get to control scheduling and logistics. It creates a, a nice opportunity for both departments and to work together for, in these scenarios. It provides an optimal training environment that's safe and secure for your officers. It allows you the opportunity for advanced training where, where, where you want it. It improves those efficiencies of trying to schedule all these people going all over the valley to try and get this training. So there's, there's a definite efficiency there. And then for those parts and pieces or props that are not completely used 100% of the time, you get to allow that, allow other communities in, and you can potentially charge them, even though you need it because it's a high-risk training opportunity, you still aren't necessarily going to be using it 100% of the time. So you can allow other folks to come in and maybe charge them to do that. The obvious con here is that you foot the bill for both capital and operational costs. And then this is not a small facility. So finding land would be a potential con to this, to this option. So what we've come up with, talking about all the programs that we want to support in training wise, is, is a overall master plan with admin on the right. And this is a, by the way, this is a conceptual site. This is not any particular site anywhere. This is just an idea of a, a piece of land somewhere where we could put all of the training opportunities. And those include, if you go to the next one.
Thank you.
Yeah. A classroom and admin building, obviously with all of your classroom, in, in-building classroom opportunities. Highway building seems a little fuzzy, but that would be where we would have a simunitions maze. As you would imagine, in, when you're training, things get broken. So all the maintenance activities to go along with all these training props would be there. An emergency operations center, because we understand that one's, your current one's getting phased out. Outdoor grinder pad, an auditorium, all the driver skills training opportunities that you would be looking for. Class A burn, and a class B drill tower, an outdoor range, canine training, and then additional training props. So what we looked at, we'll start at the bottom here, is the way that we look at construction is we try and escalate it to the midpoint of construction. So if, if, and I'm not saying this is what it is, but if construction were 12 months, the budget should la, should be escalated to the middle. So six months in. Okay? So the, the soonest, we thought, if you said, "Go today," I know that's not what we're asking, but if you said, "Go today," the soonest the construction would be at a midpoint would be at somewhere in 2025. So that's why we provided you that number. And then we thought that the, the soonest feasible year that it would probably happen would be 2028. And we separated, separated out, excuse me, the site acquisition number, because it's just a budget number. There's no reality to it. But we thought it would be prudent to have a number. If you had to buy a piece of property, there are dollars in this budget to do that. Okay? So that's the master plan. Option B would be regional training facility. And many of the pros are all the same. Okay? Actually, all the first ones are the same. The second one, obviously, if you had a partner, you would have to allow them some control over scheduling and logistics and things like that. Right? But you would all get, you would get the, those optimal training opportunities. It would be safe and secure. You, since you have control, you would, you would gain all those in-service efficiencies. And one of the biggest things is you would then get to share those operational and capital costs with, with a partner or partners. That is one big pro of going regional. Now, the con of this is those folks or, you know, communities have needs as well. So we want to figure out what those are. We'd want to figure out if certain parts and pieces need to get bigger, or smaller, or how we adjust to do that. So the size and complexity could increase, and therefore also the, the operational costs or the people required to support the facility could increase as well. So that's not necessarily a positive. It does necessitate, excuse me, necessitate a way to legally interact with folks. How are you going to pay for it? What are we going to pay for, et cetera? So we, you'd have to have some kind of governance model in order to make that happen. And if it did increase physically in land size, we'd have to find a piece of land. And it's not, that's not something that's easy to do here in the valley. Okay? As a part of this, we did reach out to a handful of local communities or adjacent communities, and there was a resounding support in sending staff at least to the training center. So that's a, that's a good, a good thing to hear. We asked if they would consider participating in the design, or we call it donation at the moment, and asked if they would be interested in participating there. And as you can see here on the top left, it's a, it's a sort of a resounding yes. And then we also wanted to see, and this was obviously based on who responded, but how, how those potential hours would be distributed between Fire and Police. And, and if we, if we were to proceed with option B, I think we would try to even out sort of who responded to the survey and how we interact with those people, because this is not necessarily telling at the moment. Okay? And then option C, lastly, is to maintain your current course. Okay? So the pro to that is you don't have to spend any, a large amount of money in capital or operational costs in order to, in order to build anything. And that decentralized model in a way is less complex for you, because you, you sort of have it in play right now, and you just keep going. As you would imagine, the cons to that are all the challenges that come with doing that are still the same. You still have all those scheduling things that, that are coming up. And it's seemingly not getting better. And that's not a Phoenix Valley region. It's a nationwide thing. It's not getting better. Training is, training hours are seemingly getting more and more out of need. So it's not, it's not just you guys here. So that, that regional demand will, will maintain as a challenge. And then obviously, that, you know, you don't have control, so you don't have the ability to control your future training needs, what they are, or how they become. So just for reference, we also wanted to give you some context of what was out there. So this is Glendale. Some of you may know it as Grip Stick. This is located on 77 acres. This does not have an emergency vehicle or EVAC track. It does have a large driver skills pad. It does have a lar, outdoor shooting range, a nice big admin building. But it's a little bit not, it's not quite as efficient as it could be, because it's got a big hill to it. So you lose a lot of efficiency in land planning doing that. But what is important about this facility, as you see here, is its neighbors. And, or lack thereof. Right? So neighbors to training opportunities are, you don't want people necessarily around. It's not, it's loud, it smells, it's smoky sometimes. It's not, not great to have a house next door to you. Okay? The next one is Gilbert. This one's located on 50 acres. There's, there's two boxes. The yellow is owned by the city itself. The orange is in the floodplain district. So there are, there's driver training out there, but there's no utilities. So no lights, no water, nothing else. Sometimes it floods. But it's a great place for a driver track, because if it floods and then dries, clean it off and get to work. We wanted to give you a little bit of context in terms of budget as well. And again, not including land acquisition. In 2020, they were approximately $83 million. So if we escalate that to 2028, it's almost double at 160. So it's not far off from what we're, what we're looking at in terms of the master plan and budget. What you'll find here too is, if you were looking at the numbers in the master plan, we laid out a fictitious site. So we tried to give you the most operational, operational efficiencies you could possibly have. They compacted it into a 50-acre triangle. That is possible. Okay? So just, just for context, this is a good one, because they do a lot of training in, in 50 acres, and it's possible. And lastly, the Scottsdale Police Department, again, this is police only. The previous two were police and fire. This one's located technically in Tempe proper, but this one's about 13 acres, and it's police only.
And so as part of our, our goal today is to deliver that study, but then also to provide a recommendation at this point, which we feel like, just based on the price tag and after consultation with finance, with executive leadership in the city, it makes the most sense to look at a regional training facility, which, you know, at, at this point does require a lot more work and some more due diligence with our partners. But I think there's an opportunity there, if council so desires, for us to reach out to those partners and, and really see, engage what their, their level of interest is. But at this point, Daniel and I are here certainly to answer any questions. And also Chief Rodriguez is here as well, if we need to bring him up.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. Questions we want to start with. I'll start over here with Councilmember Stip.
Thanks for the detailed presentation, the rest of the story that came with it. That was very appreciated. I guess we, we kind of go through it. You know, I, I had made the request that we at least explore and figure out where we're at. It's disappointing to hear the figure, but I think it would have been exciting if we had done this five years ago. We probably would have been looking at 60 million. So, you know, with wait comes cost. So the thing that I'm concerned about in providing any direction tonight is we are still waiting for a facility master plan to come through, which I think is going to inform us of other needs within the city. We moved into this beautiful facility, and we have left some staff behind in other places that may or may not be ideal, that may require the capital lift that this is going to take from us. So I'm, I'm not opposed to let's find out what's out there, because the cost is only going to go up. But I'm afraid of doing that too quickly at the expense, and I don't mean that literally, but I mean at the expense of the facility master plan and what else is happening in the city. So I think we need to be very cautious about going forward. However, when you look at the, now having said all of that, when you look at the map, there is no West Side training. Now, Grip Stick has a number of partners, and I'm not even familiar with who, who's left that bought in.
I'm not either.
And I know, for example, the City of Avondale paid in, paid in late, but I don't know that they have the same kind of access that the City of Glendale, for example, has. I think Surprise bought in, but the distance from there to, from Surprise to there is pretty great. So when you look at the geography of the map, a West Side facility makes a whole lot of sense. Does it make sense for us to be the, the leader of that at $185 million? I'm not entirely sure. I, I guess knowing if we've got two or three serious partners, then maybe that's a different conversation. But, so I don't really have an answer, a yay or a nay on that. But I, I think it's important for us to remember that we have these other things that are going on and, and the rest of the city to kind of take care of from a facility perspective. So I would also be curious, may perhaps at a later date, about phasing or even decentralizing this. You know, the, the driving component is pretty big.
Yeah.
Can we separate that out with a small?
Classroom-type building.
Classroom, and then the rest of it, you know, do that in another facility. Can we, you know, how can we, how can we phase this as opposed to swallowing the whole $185 million upfront? So just some random thoughts by a random guy.
I thought you were going to mention Tandy, but that's okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Loretta.
Yes, after Random Thoughts with Bill. I, I think it's a very good idea, and I thank you for the presentation. I think since we're one of the top growing cities in the United States, and then we have several neighbors are also just exploding as well, from your data you gave, it looks like this isn't something that would be operational until 28, really fully, you know?
Yeah.
So we're not talking it's going to be tomorrow. So I, I am definitely for, let's looking at the next steps. I would either agree with A or B. If it's B, I think that's a great way to spread the cost. But I would like to see it in Goodyear, since we're taking the lead. And I, I think if it's in our land, in our city, we do maintain a little bit as the lead partner, where we keep the control. I know we do have some land issues. Where would this would go? And perhaps it would be southern, far south Goodyear, is we have a lot of land. There's a lot of land available there. But then I guess that would facilitate, we would have to, the Sonora Parkway would have to then get constructed. Otherwise, you've still got an hour there, an hour back.
Sure.
You know, so I, I think we have got some good places to put it. I think it's needed. And we continue to grow both departments, and we're going to have to continue to grow both departments. And we need to make sure that for our citizens, that we have the top-notch training. I agree with the Councilmember Stip, how he's saying, you know, we all need to look at what else is coming. But I think we can still look at the next steps. And we've got the bonding coming up, and I think we need to consider all of those next steps. Are we going to have the facilities master plan before we go out for the bond?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you should have the final draft to, presented to you by this, in the springtime, April, May timeframe. As far as the first year needs for the budget for the CIP, we'll, we'll have that, you know, prior to April and May. So we're kind of feeding the CIP and the budget needs first, and then we'll finish up the plan.
And we go up for the bonding. Will this be something that we can have, that have an idea to put this, so this would be covered, no matter how we kind of look at it? So we kind of don't have to go back again?
Correct.
Okay. I, I thank you both. I think this is definitely needed, and we need to make sure that our staff has the top training. So safety and also liability issue. If we don't have training, something goes wrong, they're going to sue the city. So we look at it both ways. So I appreciate your presentation. So thank you.
Thank you.
Voice, mayor? Yeah, a lot of good things have already been said. So I do, I am supportive of this. I'm not sure the timing of it. And two other council members' points about the bonding capacity, what that looks like, if we're going to go out for more bonding capacity in the future. Be interesting to see what our, our citizens committee brings to us. And then also, the, the community services, sorry, the community fund districts, what was the thing that Bill, Bill mentioned? The, that, that user, that study as well, whenever that gets done.
Facilities.
Facilities District Master Plan. Sorry, we just got done with the other, other thing as well. So, so thank you. Yeah. So it'd be good to see what that looks like, to be better informed with those as well. But I'm supportive. I did talk to the mayor of Buckeye, and they're very supportive of a regional approach, if they can get in on it as well. And I think there'll be a lot of people, a lot of other cities that are, would be excited to participate also in the West Valley here as well. So I think, I thought they might have, they were talking about even showing up tonight too, because they were very excited about it.
Dan Sick.
Oh, Dan Sick? Okay. So, so I know there's other, other talk in the region, and I would love it to be in our city. I think that'd be a great asset for us. But maybe, it might be a, maybe it's a county island thing. I don't know where exactly we're going to put it. So maybe it's a county island thing, or a, or something near us where it can be utilized the best, or the best location. So, because I think having it far south, we'd have to have So, because I think having it far south, we'd have to have an I-11 or a better way to get, get people there, it just could be, could be an hour in our own city. I mean, maybe not extreme, but at least a little ways, so. So yeah, but I'm supportive of it. I appreciate the study. I like that we looked into it. I'm not sure the timing, the best timing of it, that we can, that we can take it. I like the phased approach as well, so, so yeah, still supportive of it. Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
The last conversation I had on this was in 2008, when I was on the Public Safety Committee, and at that time, we identified that we needed a training facility. When Glendale started to be built, and there was a conversation, I don't know how many conversations I had with the then-city manager, asking if there was some way that we could be a part of it, because if you don't, if you're not, if you don't buy into one of these, you're right, you get whatever training time is left over, and if there's no training time left over, you're SOL, period. I think this is a wonderful opportunity for us to establish our presence really in the West Valley, whether we do regionally. I, I definitely want it in Goodyear. I'm sure we can find someplace to put it, if we put our heads together. I mean, there's enough land around here somewhere that we can come up with it. And if we're going to go out for bonding, we might as well have the conversation to include this amount of bonding, so we don't go out for second bonding. We know we're going to be building a new park to finish the, the rest of our, at the Goodyear Rec Center. There's other things we're going to do, too. So we might as well have some idea of whether we use the bonding or not. You know, it took us, what, 25 years to use the bonding we just used? And thank goodness, someone was brave enough to get the bonding back in those days, so that it was just here and available until we were able to, to actually do it. So I feel the same way, but this, this is a wonderful project, I think we should do it. It's very important that we have training facilities for both police and fire. There's just no question about it. And they're going to be training forever with new standards or old standards, or whatever it is, and I, I'm, I'm for this completely, but I just don't want us to put it on a back burner and just think about it. We need to, we really need to seriously, if we're going to do anything at all, we need to move on it, or at least have an idea of what we want, so that the cost is just going to keep escalating, and, you know, like you said, it's already doubled.
Yeah.
Think of what we, think of what it would have cost us if we'd have done it in 2008, when my committee came and said, "Let's do a training facility." It could have been the state of the art, but that, hindsight's wonderful. Anyway, good job. Thank you very much for the presentation, and I, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Guess I want to ask Chief and Chief, do you like the combined model of police and fire? Is that, is that a proven model? Works well?
Yeah, that works very well for us.
I know you have separate areas within that, but it is, okay. Yes, he's a thumbs up as well.
Yeah, I see a thumbs up back there.
When Glendale was developed, was it developed to be a regional?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it was developed as a regional public safety training facility.
Okay. So based on the presentation, if we opt for regional, we'll also have to think a little bigger, because we'll have, you'll need more space, more.
That's one of the things that Frank, Daniel and I, and Chief Rodriguez have talked about, is really getting a full understanding of our partners' need, ours' needs, because it will probably increase the scope of the project as well. And, and I know they've, they've worked on a lot of regional facilities, so I'll have Daniel kind of jump in.
Yeah, you know, you, they have these sort of high-usage, high-frequency needs as well, and they're just going to stack it on top of your high-frequency highs. So you can't just have, if there's four classrooms, now you might need six, for, just as a, for instance, which obviously expand, you know, there's parts and pieces all over. But one of the things that we, that I'm hearing going around the table potentially is, maybe there's a part or piece of this high-frequency, high-use thing that is yours and you control in your city, and those things that are not maybe used as much, but everybody still needs one, like an EVOC track, maybe that's something that we can regionalize, potentially, you know? And, and a bunch of people can jump in and say, "All right, we'll, we'll give you a part and piece of that small thing," and everybody gets, you know, everybody gets an opportunity to use it, but you don't lose control of your classrooms and defensive tactics, and, you know, some other, whatever the other things may be. So it brings your price tag and your operational budget into something more tangible, but it still allows you the opportunity to have a part or piece of something else.
So there's opportunities to be creative and?
Yeah, absolutely.
And take this model and, and do something unique with it. But nevertheless, the cost will be higher than what was given generally for regional center versus?
I mean, yeah, maybe.
Okay.
Maybe. We'd have, that'd be part of something we'd want to stay.
Okay. Has there been any consideration of what land might be, be used? I mean, we've got so much industrial space, like, those would be great neighbors, it would seem.
Yeah, we've, we've looked at a lot of different areas, and it, you know, we've worked with the city's real estate, and we, and again, we, we just want to make sure that whoever's planning that area next to it, you know, 20 years from now, that they're not going to get mad at, you know, the training facility being next to them. So I, I know that happened in Glendale, their, the landfill actually complains about the fire training facility when they, when they burn, which is ironic, yes, but, but it is, you know, something that you have to kind of consider. So we've looked at a lot of different sites, but we just didn't feel like it was fair to call out those sites out tonight.
But you're?
Yeah, we've, we've looked at, yeah.
You're pondering options, okay. Well, I think what's unique about Goodyear is that we have a specific culture, both in our police and our fire department, and, which makes us an employer of choice, certainly. In order to maintain that culture, and certainly have all of our employees grow and be successful, as well as it continue the community confidence in us, and, which is, is so critical, especially these times, you know, training is just essential. Obviously, we're hi, we'll continue to hire, and the, the fact that we kind of have to wheel and deal to get our fire people in, and, you know, all these, it's, it's not very efficient. We're, we're losing a lot of time. We want to hire the best and brightest, but we don't want them sitting around in the meanwhile, while we're, we're doing that. I know that this will compete with other things. We've been talking recently about Cotton Lane, and what are we going to do? I mean, the cap, you know, again, referring to the capital lift, you know, there's a, there's a lot of things we want to lift, but I say absolutely yes to exploring, you know, the different options and feasibility for this. I think it's really critical to our success.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bray?
I'll follow right there with what Kano was, Councilwoman Kano was saying, is, I think that you go with a regional facility. I think the staff should talk to whoever it is, Buckeye, Avondale, Surprise, it makes the most sense, I would think. Start looking at what their needs are, what they want out of a regional facility, and then bring two or three options, right? We just do the classroom part. Maybe we have a classroom part, and the track is somewhere else, because it makes more sense, or the burning part is somewhere else, because it makes more sense, even though it's a regional facility, right? I mean, I know that one in Phoenix, isn't it just the, the fire, it just got the burned building and?
Yeah.
And all of that.
And they have classrooms, yeah.
You know, even if there is a little bit of splitting up stuff that makes sense, I would, so that would be my suggestion, is take it out, talk with those cities, bring back two or three options, and let's get it voted on.
Okay. Councilmember Stip, you okay? You know, being last, everybody's pretty much covered it all. The only thing I, I want to piggyback on what, you know, Councilmember Stip meant it, is we're going to have a facilities' master plan at some point, because if we're going to go out for bond, hopefully we know what we're going out for bond for, and then there's that fine line on how much we're going out for bond, so that it actually gets approved. We've got to be sure that size, that we, that we size that bond and what we're going to do is not overly aggressive, but it may end up getting killed at that point. So all that I think's important, to see what that wish list is for all of our buildings on top of this, but I think it's something that's needed, obviously, to kind of look to see, exploring. I wouldn't want to slow that, that train down, because it's just going to get more expensive as time goes on. So I think you've done a good piece on there. But I'm really looking forward to the master facilities' plan, only because that's going to get an idea of what kind of numbers we're looking at for our bonds, and how we're going to package that to make sure that we can actually get that approved, because right now, it's my understanding, we don't really have anything. So we've got to have something in there, and, you know, hopefully it gets passed, whatever that's on there. So, did you say, did you have something?
I, I do.
No, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, I think that this is a sell, an easy sell to our public, when we tell them what we're trying to do, and to train, and to do it for both police and fire, and I don't think we're going to have an issue to, to sell the bonding for this thing. It just depends on how much other is together.
That's my point.
And then we're going to have to work really hard to see that we target the special audiences that we need to target to pass this bonding. But, I mean, I'm excited about this, and I think most folks will be, too.
No, I don't disagree there, but if we're asking for 300 million or 600 million, there's a difference there, so.
I know, I get it.
Okay. Well, with that, then, we need what? Yep, go ahead.
On the facilities' master plan, do you think that we can have a option timed, so that it goes into the facilities' master plan?
Yeah, we're going to include this as part of the facilities' master plan, so they were kind of watching us tonight, can I include that in there, so, yeah.
Additionally, if we're going towards a regional, I mean, Goodyear has taken the first step, and it needs to get done, but at the end of the day, if we're looking at a regional thing, and we, Avondale, Surprise, like, I'd hope that they would kick in some funding to do the regional study and get that completed.
That's what, yeah, I was talking to the Finance Director about that, is there an opportunity for us all to kind of?
Right.
Pay in to, for a study, and he said, "Yeah, there's, there's that opportunity."
Okay.
So, yeah, we would ask that, too.
You're ahead of the game. Thank you.
We're good? Everybody good? All right, with that, we're going to need 15 minutes, so that makes it about, what, 6:10? So I'm going to head and close this meeting here, give them 15 minutes to set up in there, and if we all step out there, we're going to get a shot with the volleyball team.